This is Pierce, the latest pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular school committee meeting Monday, March 5th. School committee members and student reports. School committee chair report. I have nothing at this time. Resource committee, no report.
No report.
School building.
No report.
Any comments? Seeing none. School building needs.
No report.
Alright, no report. Any comments?
I have a comment.
Questions? Yes.
I'm not sure this is the appropriate place to make my comment, but I'm gonna jump in there. Following the tragedy, the shooting in Florida, it gave some thought to our needs, physical needs for the, for the school on Academy Street there. And I was wondering if we might, in view of that, fast forward just, you know, get the roof on, get the kids in. It's near to the police station and I was just thinking it might, that serious event in the nation might escalate us to move faster to get that, that place habitable or up to, up to snuff. That's just, I just made that.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Riddler. We've got a school safety update from the superintendent. He'll fill us all in on what we're doing in terms of school safety. I can tell you that the Long Joe Middle School roof is moving forward with a design firm that we're selecting, hopefully very, very shortly. And so the intent is for us to have that roof repaired in preparation for the beginning of school in September.
Right.
And, and everything else ready to go on the fourth floor as well. Yeah.
I think the superintendent has already been proactive on doing some things about safety even before this happened.
Well, I understand that. I just, man, I just saw this made a little wind, a little impetus to.
Yeah, it is going. We met last week, the superintendent. He'll speak on that shortly, so, okay. School building needs. Well, we kind of touched upon it just now. The Crocker School mitigation is moving on, moving along very nicely. Mr. Jokler and I had a conversation about that this morning and we're actually a bit ahead of schedule. Don't hold us to anything, but we're moving, moving certainly expeditiously to get this done. Policy committee. That would be Ms. Craig, and she's not here. Okay, students support committee.
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Any comments? None. School personnel committee. That would be me. There's nothing to report, I don't believe. We beginning negotiations, right, with the, with the teachers. Executive committee, nothing to report. And last but certainly not least, the student report. Please, Lisa and Matthew.
Hey, I'm just gonna say thank you all again for having us tonight. You know, it's really nice to be among your company, so. And Lisa, I'm sure agrees. So, we're gonna get started with the drama club. That's just what they're formerly known as, but some people just called them the theater program. So, on Saturday, March 3rd, they had their state competition play. It's called Something's Rotten in the State of Denmark. It's a live stage adaptation of Hamlet, so some of you may know that play from middle school or high school. And basically, they just, they competed against several other high schools in Massachusetts to move on to the semifinals. Unfortunately, they did not advance, but they, a couple of our actors did win a couple of awards. So that was nice to see. Emma Lancy, who was a sophomore, played, who played the ghost, she won an award. And Logan Miles, who played King Hamlet, who consecutively has won an award every year. She played King Claudio, so he also won an award. And I just wanted to add this to. So, you know. The Fitchburg High, I know that the drama, the drama program at our school is, I'm trying to put this in a more euphemistic way. It's, I feel that it's underfunded and I think a lot of people in our, in our club feel that it's underfunded and underrepresented. So, we are working on things like strategic planning and logistical outlining to make sure that maybe we can look for other methods to raise some money, like the National Honor Society. They do go out and they visit, I think they visit just a bunch of different businesses and they just look, they seek funding. I'm not sure exactly how they do that, but that's what they do. But overall, though, it was a really good experience, especially for me, because this is my first time doing high school theater. So, it really opened my eyes to the really, really mature actors on stage. I mean, they're just, it's really interesting because they're so good on stage and then you meet them in person, like, they're just regular people. It's just so funny. I was just, I was just astonished. They're such good actors. People from like Chumpford High School and Bradford Christian Academy. So, yeah. So I'm gonna move on to ocean science team, but any questions?
What do you, the drama club's underfunded?
Well, yeah, we did talk about this.
What do you need?
Well, a lot of what we discussed as a group was that we did, you know, we did receive a good share of in-kind donations. We did notice that in terms of monetary incentives, we weren't really, there wasn't this group of, how do I explain it? We, we received a lot of like equipment, basically, from like the alumni in the past who've done theater. But we didn't really have the funds to, that we, that we needed to buy other equipment, because other schools, you know, they used on their sets, they used double-decker floors or they might've used projection screens. But, and we wanted to do stuff like that too, but we just didn't really have, you know, the money to do that. And so, I kind of thought about that while I was watching the other shows, I was thinking, wow, that really sucks. We, you know, and I do see other programs and clubs, they have, they have the funds to do the things that they'd like to do. And I don't know if "underfunded" is the right term to use. I'm just using that just in this case.
You need more money.
Yeah, basically.
More for the props, if anything, because those are the costly things to create and make.
And we are really creative. Like, we, we, you know, painted the walls and everything and, but things like, especially technology, that really helps to build a set and, you know, mesmerize the audience. So, yeah, that's what we mean.
You need to ask Mr. Roach, you know, for what you need. And I don't know if the money will be there, but if you don't ask, you're never going to get it.
Yeah.
So you need to put together what you need. And then we go to, you know, you come to the committee and the superintendent and ask. And if there are funds there, then we could help. But we need to know.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the drama club? Alright, so on the same day, the ocean science team also participated in the annual Blue Lobster Bowl at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, also known as MIT. So these, this was led by coaches Doug Grant and Laura Bullock, who are science teachers at the school. And I'm not, I'm not sure specifically what they did, but I do know that they did participate in various science experiments related to ocean science, of course. So, yeah. If you have any questions, just contact someone who actually, you know, participated in it.
I heard that they had a very good outcome. They did very good. I congratulated Mr. Grant today in his classroom. And they, it's kind of like what you would see in a movie of a competition where there's like podiums and there's like a button and whoever clicks the button first gets to answer the question. If you get it right, you get points and you advance. And I think that's really cool that they do that and they have hours of practice after school. And there's like so much commitment and preparation and that's something to be proud of, you know.
Alright, any questions on the Blue Lobster Bowl event? So the Hallmark Renaissance Assembly that we always have will be taking place on March 9th at 1:00 PM, according to Mr. Roach. And parents and guardians are welcome. And this is just an assembly that awards students for having outstanding attendance and consistently exceptional grades. So it's just a great way to, you know, allow students to come together and to celebrate their achievements. So, yeah, when they win prizes and raffles are drawn, as far, as far as I know. Okay. Any questions on the Renaissance Assembly?
Do you know, Matthew, approximately how many, like what percentage of kids are recognized at that event?
Usually the auditorium is full, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Three fifty.
Yeah, I was gonna say in the three hundreds. Like usually like the whole auditorium, like the whole bottom section is like filled with students.
Great. Thank you.
So, yeah, that's a lot of kids, obviously. You can tell that we have a lot of exceptional students at our school. Alright, so the National School Walkout Day, something that I've been talking about, to Michaela Wakefield, the one who's the leader of this whole planning thing, is going to be on March 14th. It's scheduled for Wednesday, March 14th. Hopefully, nothing happens with like weather. Even if there are weather issues, we're going to probably stay inside. And this is just essentially in memoriam to seventeen victims of the school shooting in Parkland, Florida, at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. So, there has been a growing responsibility in the organizers to ensure that the seventeen-minute civil disobedience flows satisfactorily. The event will initiate at approximately 10:00 AM with speeches, music, singing, and signs and posters to be manifested as part of a civic, as part of a civically transmitting respect for, for and to the parents and families of the victims of the Parkland school shooting. So incidentally, this whole engagement is still being planned out and is going to function as a meticulously formulated event in pursuit of warranting and demonstration characterized by order and civility, notwithstanding the very few students who might protest on a diametrically polar side, whether that be through staying indoors or existing outside with the rest of the school. And if you really want to know any more detailed information, then you can contact Michaela or I. I'm not going to get, I'm not gonna go, you know, too much into particulars, but, you know. Questions?
Could I ask, Superintendent, are you talking about that tonight as well, or?
No, not specifically. I'm gonna be talking about the overall school safety topic. But on this, I can fill in some of the blanks here. We've met, Mr. Roach and I met with your group, the current events group, with Michaela and basically outlined, you know, some ideas in terms of where and how and all of that. The ten o'clock time, they're gonna gather in the soccer field. And then really, you know, they're taking it from there, focusing on the seventeen minutes. But what they're gonna be doing in terms of silence or particular comments and all that, the students are planning that and working with Mr. Roach on that. And then the group has been reaching out to the middle school and the elementary schools. And mainly, the elementary and middle schools are doing things that are age-appropriate in their own classrooms. But I think one of the directions was the, everyone wear yellow for that day. So when they were looking for things that the whole district could do as one, that seemed to be one that got some traction, was to encourage everyone to wear yellow across the district. And that has symbolism that Michaela can talk about a little bit later. But, you know, it seems like things are underway for that day.
And will there be a police presence there?
No, the, all of the staff is gonna be a part of it. So, you know, the whole staff will be there, just like they would be inside the school. And what, one of the things we talked about is that if there are students who do not want to participate, they will let the school know ahead of time and there will be other arrangements made for them before that.
How long is this gonna be?
Seventeen minutes. It's, you know, starts at ten o'clock and it's seventeen minutes. And the seventeen minutes is representing the seventeen victims of the shooting.
I just, I'm touched by the fact that.
I take that back in terms of the police presence. We have a full-time resource officer at the high school. So the resource officer would be there as he usually is every day.
I'm touched by the, the natural outflow of desire to unite your sorrow with the families. And I'm wondering if the names of the victims will be read out. It's very moving when they do that for the veterans here once a year, you know, bell tolls and the names are called. And will you be in contact with the families? Maybe pictures or something or videos so that the families know that up in Fitchburg, Massachusetts, their, their children were remembered? That's just a dimension that I think would, would, you know, the unity expressed would be a comfort to them.
Well, I did pass on to the committee because one of the things was, there was a request from one of the teachers at Parkland, in Parkland at the high school, to send letters of encouragement. So I don't know if I sent the contact information to the school and to the students, so I don't know if they followed up with any of that. But that was one opportunity to make personal contact with the students at, at Parkland High School. But I think that any of these suggestions, basically what we've done is, we've made a few suggestions, but this is really a student-driven initiative. And as I said to the group of students, if we ever wondered whether high school students could organize and speak their mind, we've learned that in the last two weeks. So, but I've also found that they're very open to any suggestions that we have. And, you know, those are good ones in terms of how do we let that community know that at this time, on that particular day, all the students at Fitchburg High were.
Remember their sons and daughters.
Were thinking of them and were in unity with them. So Michaela's here tonight, so I'm sure she's making note of these ideas.
I just wanted to say, I agree absolutely. We will, like I said, in memoriam, you know, the seventeen victims. In terms of reading out the names, I would, I presume most likely, we haven't planned, again, the more detailed parts of the speeches. We're just leaving that up to the speakers. But I think we will make the reading out the names part as part of like a formality than just something that a speaker will say. So, and again, I'm not sure about contacting or keeping in touch with people in Parkland. But I would, I would hope that we do and I'll talk to Michaela about that. And I know Michaela's very open to these types of things. So, yeah. Any questions? Alright, so.
You have more?
We have a lot more.
Let's go.
Alright, so the foyer at the school has been complemented with three new flags, Algeria, China, and Syria. That's one thing. Not sure.
I think it's because we've never had students attending Fitchburg. Yeah, it represents every flag for every type of culture and country that represents like Fitchburg High School.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, that's good.
So bracelets will be distributed to students this week to promulgate the newfound initiative, Red Raider Kindness. I think it was started by superintendent. To show support for the victims affected by the ordeal in Parkland. And, yeah, okay. So upcoming sports events, one, the only one I would know, intramural slash interclass basketball games, March 12th to 16th. It's 2:30 to 4:00 PM.
Okay. So, a substance abuse and screening tool process will begin this year. Massachusetts Public School districts are expected to do the following to address substance abuse issues statewide due to a new law. It's just, they're gonna be like conducting screenings on an annual basis at two different grade levels. Grade seven and nine are recommended. They are gonna notify the parents or guardians and then they're going to permit a student or the student's parent or guardian to opt out of the screening if they choose not to be involved. Advisory within the school will be held on March 9th and the 22nd as well. And we have an early release day this upcoming Wednesday, March 7th. And we're very thrilled to announce.
Because of the storm, right? It's nothing to do with the storm? Just happens to be an early release. Perfect timing.
I know, right? We're very happy to announce that the 2017 FHS graduation rate and dropout rate are at the highest and lowest, respectively, in school history.
Yeah, that's great.
The eighty-seven point two percent graduation rate is a full percentage point higher than the school's previous high. And the one point two dropout rate is thirty-three percent lower than the previous best, one point eight percent. And significantly lower than the state average of one point eight percent. So, yeah, that's, that's very good. Yeah.
Good stuff.
You know, Mr. Roach has been doing a great job with promoting good attendance within the school. And all the staff has been like promoting every single opportunity. And students are actually doing a very good job of taking every free opportunity they have. So that's a very, very good thing. Attendance update, since the return from the holiday break, two hundred and seventy-one students have zero absences. And two hundred and sixty-three had five or more. The attendance challenge is struggling to make an impact, so keep in mind that there are varieties of ways that students can earn raffle tickets. Even if a student had a few absences in the week, they can bounce right back and earn tickets as we move further into March. We need to pick up the attendance pace with the MCAS, APs, NCs, and the obvious issue that the impact, student performance related to students being in school. If there's any reason for a student to be out, you know, they're suggested to like call the school. If you're sick, it's kind of understandable that you can't go to school if you're sick and you're gonna get everyone else sick, which causes more absences. So, yeah, we're trying to do that. The book drive, the Fitchburg PTO is looking for gently-used young adult books for Fitchburg High's upcoming spring read-a-thon. I was present during the parent-teacher conferences and I noticed that a, a large amount of books were donated and sorted to give to different English teachers, so that was very good. There is also a Fitchburg High School Parent Book Club where PTO and Title I Department invite all parents of FHS to join us in reading and discussing "Our Kids, the American Dream in Crisis" by Robert Putnam. And the books will be provided at no cost.
Lisa, is it, who do, who do they, you give the books to? Who?
For the.
If anybody wanted a.
Book drive?
Yeah. I mean, is it, is it, just bring them to the office or?
Yeah, that's what I'm assuming. You can just drop them off in the front office, yeah.
Okay. And all kinds of books, right?
Yeah, more like teen.
Everything, just everything?
Fitchburg High, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, alright.
MCAS ELA will be held on March 27th through March 29th. These dates are very important for the graduation requirement. You must pass MCAS in order to graduate. For the mathematics makeup MCAS, which is, will be held March 5th and 6th to any eleventh or twelfth grader who has not previously passed the math MCAS test. And for the English Language Arts MCAS, March 27th, 28th, and 29th, all tenth graders and eleventh graders new to Massachusetts Public School will be taking this test. The gala, which will be held May 5th, is the Fitchburg Public Schools will host its third annual gala to support student activities and enrichment on Sunday, May 5th, at Fitchburg High School. There will be a food service, raffle, auctions, et cetera. And it's also the same night of prom for Fitchburg High School. So I'm going to assume that freshmen and sophomores are most likely to be volunteering during that time. Oh, I'm going to highlight some of our exceptional track athletes. This weekend, they placed at the New England Championships in Boston. Hannah Nealon placing third in her event, setting a new school record for the girls' 600 meters. And Angel Figueroa placing fourth in his event of boys' 300 meters. And the boys' four-by-two-hundred relay consisting of Eli Ashmore, Koby Sadler, Landon Tucker, and Angel Figueroa placed third as well. So the track team has been just doing exceptional throughout the whole season, just on fire, all the runners. Wow. And the boys' hockey team also made it to the playoff games as well against Worcester and put up a great fight. But sadly, they lost, four to three. But they really, they had a good season too, the boys' hockey team.
I was at that tournament, the last one that was at the Field House. Was it maybe three weeks ago? Saturday? I think it was a Saturday? You know, you have to, you have to tip your hat to the people that, when they, when they agreed to build a high school, that they put that Field House in there.
Oh, yeah.
It is so, I mean, there's nothing like it around here.
Yeah.
And that attracts a great deal of interest and.
Oh, yeah.
Not the least of which is revenue.
Yeah.
So it's a good thing all around. Not, not just a beautiful facility. Place was packed.
Yeah.
From people, from schools, from all around. It was great.
Giant. It's, it works for everything. And just, our, like the rain spot, I guess you could say instead of the rain date for the walkout will be held in the Field House if there is snow on the soccer field. So that's, it works for everything.
There probably will be. I think there will be, unfortunately.
A school-wide walk-around, yeah.
Yeah, right.
But, yeah, that is all for the updates at Fitchburg High.
Questions?
I just have a comment about your book drive. I've seen libraries that have, that, in school systems that have changed and they throw away all these wonderful books. Are you, are you saying any kind of book is welcome at the, to be dropped off at the school? And might you make note, I don't know how your communication system is with other schools, but if any library's closing, look to, to us to, for, you know, to donate them?
Yeah, well, here it stated that we're looking for like gently-used, like young adult books. But we could also use like books for educational purposes or books, as Mr. Roach said, for the pre-K, so anything helps. And if we have books that, you know, do not fit the criteria that we're looking for, we could always donate it to the middle schools or elementary schools as well. So no book will be going to waste.
Maybe some communication that would let others know that, you know, their junk is our gold or whatever.
Lisa mentioned hockey. I'd just like to congratulate Fitchburg State University for winning the MA. Basket championship and they're coached by former Fitchburg High School teacher Dean Fuller.
Oh, wow.
Going on to, they're playing in Rhode Island.
Rhode Island.
Nichols?
Nichols.
And I think it's Nichols College, yeah. Oh.
Good for them.
Yeah.
All sports are having great seasons.
Dean Fuller's always, always had a, a lot of success at Fitchburg State. I mean, he's got, he's amassed quite a record over the years.
Yeah.
I think they had his numbers, Chad, they had his numbers in the paper tonight. Pretty impressive stuff. I mean, wins, losses, and ties, yeah.
Yeah, he's been a fixture there for so long.
Yeah, yeah.
Brought a lot of local athletes.
Yeah, yeah.
To Fitchburg State.
Yeah.
Kudos to Dean.
Quality hockey, yeah.
That's good. Brings a sense of pride.
He was a special ed teacher at Fitchburg High for many years before he retired, yeah. Okay, any further questions? Thank you, Lisa and Matthew. Moving on, approval of the minutes for the previous school committee meeting.
Make a motion.
Meeting from February 5th, 2018. Motion made to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second and all in favor. Motion made in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, engineer this. Executives, are we going in? There will be executive session, right? For, uh-
Negotiations.
Negotiations. Communications, non-public comment, is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Five-minute limit, seeing none. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Ravenel.
Okay, thank you. First, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna recognize two students tonight, but one of them is sick. Landon Tucker is home ill. He was one of those absentees today. But knowing Landon, you know, he's only not there because he's probably on a deathbed. Uh, so he texted me and emailed me and, uh, I said we would go on. But Michaela is here, uh, her mom is here with, uh, her. Uh, and, uh, Albert, is maybe you can come and talk a little bit about Landon and what's going on, uh, with him. So if Michaela and Albert will come up. Um, I gave you some, I gave you some, uh, handouts. Uh, there's a handout that's going out as a press release. It's now official and it's on the, uh, the Coca-Cola website. That Landon Tucker is the official recipient of one of the Coca-Cola scholarships, which is, uh, quite a substantial scholarship of $20,000 a year. Um, and the competition, as you can well imagine, for those scholarships are pretty intense. So this press release, uh, went out today, uh, and, uh, we'll be following up on it. And just for those of you who've been around for a while, um, Landon is the third, uh, in the time I've been here to receive the Coca-Cola scholarship. Michael Richard was one and Sandy Lor was also, uh, one. So that's pretty spectacular. And then Michaela, there's also a, a handout on Michaela's successes from the newspaper. Uh, I handed those out to you, so I'm gonna let, uh, Michaela talk about what she's been up to. Uh, and then Albert kind of fill us in on what Landon has been up to.
Thank you for inviting me here to begin with. Uh, does anyone have any questions regarding the National Ocean Science Team? No, okay. Also, uh, let's get this out of the way, does anyone have any questions regarding the national walkout? No, okay. So, um, I-
Actually, can I, Kimmy?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't know, you're, so you're in the current events club as well?
No, so I, uh, came up with the idea to bring the national walkout to Pittsburgh High School. So over February break, I contacted Mr. Roach and Mr. Ravenel. And then I contacted other groups like the current events club through the school.
Just, uh, just to throw something out there that, um, it's an, it's an incredible expression of solidarity, um, for the students in the school. And a real important exercise in civic engagement. And maybe that the, maybe you can pass that on to the current events club, that may be something that they want to consider in terms of, um, thinking about letter-writing campaigns, thinking about taking it beyond, um, that day. Uh, and what, you know, the diversity of viewpoints, you know, are immense. Um, but I think if they have some ability to help students understand how you can go beyond the walkout and how you can reach out and write to your congressman or write to, um, many different groups. Um, that might be an, another piece to be thinking about. And maybe you've already thought about that, I don't know.
Yeah, definitely. We've, um, touched upon writing letters and, um, I know Mr. Tucker is, uh, trying to get a petition in the works. Um, I'm not sure what that consists of, of right now. He's trying to get Landon to help him out with that, but, um, we're definitely gonna be writing letters in the future and I'll, uh, make sure to bring it up in the next meeting. Cause that is something we want to do and we really want to make sure, like you were saying, it's not just one day. We want to make sure there is change this time. And so we need to be the people that, um, speak for the ones that don't have a voice anymore, because we have that in our power to make a change for good.
Yeah, and I think student engagement and student voices have been, um, such a refreshing piece to this. Um, but, you know, some, sometimes people aren't really aware of other ways that they can have some agency or they can kind of continue that fight, so, so, thanks.
Just to add to that, to Mr. Lebel, the current events club, I'm their ally, but Mr. Tucker, the teacher, is the advisor.
Okay.
Um, but even way before this, they've developed five subcommittees. And one of the subcommittees that they have is mental health awareness.
Yeah, right.
I run the mental health awareness.
Okay.
I was actually going to add, um, my next idea for the meeting is to create, we have like a inspirational quote jar up in the main office and guidance. And with, um, the Red Raider kindness thing going around, I was thinking that we can have like a kindness jar. So you, you know, you take a, you take a compliment and then you pass it to someone else, so whatever the compliment says, you can, you know, give it to a peer. You know, just tell them and it can make someone's day, you know, a compliment can really change someone's whole mood.
Yeah, that's great.
I, I hope you continue. There are a number of politicians throughout this country that think you're gonna go away, that it happened and it's, it-
That's it. Um, it's your future and I hope you stay on it and, uh, throughout, continue in contact throughout the country so your students can make a change. Because some of the old-time politicians aren't going to unless you do something.
Definitely. Also, um, the, I'm looking here at one of the petitions that, um, Landon had shared and it's an act to protect and save your children, so it's kind of going against, um, like, the, the, the passing of the laws, uh, to ban the assault weapons, like how it's, how things aren't being passed and how, um, you know, things like that, like the gun restrictions aren't tight enough and it's just like a greater protest of all, um, the school shootings, kind of putting your name in there, saying that you like, you know, you've had enough and we want to change. So I think that's nice.
Thanks.
Okay, so, um, as far as my scholastic achievements, this past, this past summer, I was able to do an internship at UMass Medical. And dorm at Worcester State University and take classes there that were on the college level. And I had a really great time there. Mr. Mercado presented me with the opportunity. And I was one of 10 kids from FHS that applied and I got accepted. And it was just a really great experience overall. It led me to realize that I want to become a genetic counselor when I grow up rather than working in the lab, because I get to deal with more of bioethics and, um, the patients. Cause they're not just a number to me, they are just people like us, so I definitely want to do that when I grow up. Um, more recently, I applied for the VFW scholarship. Uh, the topic was American History, Our Hope for the Future. So, uh, my family is big into politics, mostly my grandmother, she yells at the TV on CNN all the time. But, so, um, using my passion for politics and through taking my US history class with Dr. Sherblum. I, uh, sat down and I wrote what I thought are, we should be considering for our nation and what progress we've made and what progress we can still make to make it a better place. And it was a speech contest, so at the same time I was taking Ms. Hirons' speech class at an honors level. And so I put those two skills together and I ended up getting second place, so I got a $100 scholarship that I'll be receiving in June. And then I applied for the Women Making a Difference essay contest through Pittsburgh State and Lemonster Public Library, following the community read of Girls of the Atomic City. And I wrote about Gertie Corey, who was a woman in science, who was basically an unsung hero of her time. Uh, she was during World War II and she came up with the Corey cycle, which helped with diabetes study. And that was what my internship was in during the past summer, so I kind of connected on that level and also her scholastic level because she was interested in Latin and chemistry and those are my best classes, so. Um, yeah, so I wrote about her and I ended up winning first place, so I got some money from that too. Um, as of right now, I only have enough to pay for like a quarter of a college textbook, but I'm, yeah. I'm gonna keep applying for more scholarships to, um, earn some more money. And I just apply for scholarships that I'm passionate about, because they're easier to write about. And I'm hoping that I'm inspiring other kids younger, older than me and even my age to do the same, because people from Pittsburgh, they have a chance just as much as everyone else. And a lot of people put us down, but we're smart, intellectual kids, so we need to showcase that. Lemonster.
Michaela, I have to say, I, I went for Chinese food before coming for the school committee, so my fortune today. Impossible is a word only to be found in the dictionary of fools. Obviously, you don't have a dictionary of fools. But I thought, because you're, it is, keep going, keep trying. Terrific. Albert?
Um, just, just to give an update about, as Mr. Ravenel mentioned about Landon and the Coca-Cola scholarship. Um, so the Coca-Cola scholarship is probably one of the most prestigious scholarships out there in the country. Generally, most of the students that are accepted traditionally are going to either, um, many Ivy League schools, Harvard, Stanford, um, Yale, Brown. I'm trying to remember what the other school was. But there were the five Ivy League schools that most of their recipients go to. Um, it's been for, going around for about 30 years now. Each year, they se- select 150 students from the nation. There was 90,000 applicants this year. From those 90,000 applicants, um, you know, last year, we had four semifinals. I was excited. I was like, our-
Semifinals?
We had four semifinals last year. I'm like, it would be great if all four were selected, but I was hoping at least one, but none from the four last year made it, um, to the next round. Um, this year, we had one semifinalist, which was Landon. And at that point, it went from 90,000 to about 1,900 students. At that point, Landon had some questions that he had to respond to, share some evidence. And, um, submitted, he went for an interview. From that process, the 1,900 went down to 252. From that 252, they selected 150. There is only one other student in the Commonwealth and it's in Waltham, um, that was selected, so he is one of two students from Massachusetts that received this. It's a $20,000 award that he can use over 10 years. He's hoping to use it for grad school. He's already kind of, uh, thinking ahead. Um, he, he was also selected as a Posse Scholar this year, um, which waives his tuition to Union College. He's still responsible for a woman board and his fees and, and et cetera. But the main reason why, this was an add-on, but the main reason why he was come, supposed to come tonight was he was recipient for the Prudential Spirit Community Award. Interestingly enough, Pittsburgh had two students, one from the other school, Monty Tech, um, who won. Um, but he received the bronze and, and well-deserved. The student has been doing a project for, for five years. Landon was recognized, um, by the Prudential Spirit with a bronze award for his efforts with, um, current events for, um, the clothing drive, um, for homeless teens. Um, for the duct tape the principal with Mr. Roach, with the hurricane relief funds. Down to, um, duct taping Mr. D, uh, for Crocker Field and Crocker Elementary School and some other projects that's going on. So, he's quite busy also and I think it's catching up with him and he's exhausted and tired and fell ill. That's it.
Terrific questions. Uh, just a big applause for everybody. Thank you so much and thank you to your grandmother for yelling at the television and inspiring you to do great things.
I'm not gonna ask you what she yells.
Thank you.
Give your alumni award, Len.
Um-
He's, he's the alumni.
Oh.
That'll be next year.
Yeah, I'm a junior.
That'll be next year.
I'm a junior.
He's only a junior.
She's already raking it in.
Yeah, she getting a head start at it all.
Mrs. Fleming asked if this was gonna be repeated, this, uh, walkout every year, but it sounds like what the issue is, is that this will generate other kinds of activities that, you know, will, will be looking at the issues that are around this whole issue of Parkland High School and stuff like that, right?
Yeah, definitely.
There was a student from Parkland High School selected as a Coca-Cola scholar.
Really?
Yes.
Wow. Wow, that's pretty powerful. Okay, well, thank you very much. Now, we would like to honor two people who gave up all this opportunity to hear of our students. So come up here and it's Mrs. Walsh and Mrs. Fleming. And swimming, these are little gifts for you and I want to give you an opportunity to say a little bit about your time on the school committee and what you're doing now and how much we miss you. So, join us.
Well, I have to tell you, Michaela is a tough act to follow. She said, uh, "When I grow up," and I thought, well, you're pretty darn grown up to me. Um, I, I, this is a, a very nice surprise. I was surprised to get the, uh, email from Patty and, uh, I, I think it's very nice of you. Um, I, I miss being on the school committee. Um, I, I enjoy and coming back and hearing the student report and hearing all the good things going on in, in all of the schools. Um, it's always enlightening. I do miss that part of it. Counselor Fleming and I have, uh, moved on to the, to the city council. Uh, where we remain, um, I guess, I, I'll speak for myself on this part. I'm getting used to the transition from being, uh, on the school committee to a, a, a city council and the various responsibilities there.
Much more civil body, isn't it?
Which, which one?
The city council.
I'm gonna plead the fifth.
Well, I can tell you, it's like reading a novel every week.
I'm kidding.
Because there is so, there is a, there's a, there's a lot of reading, yeah, there's a, you get something every day and there's pages and you have to research it, so it's, it's definitely, it's, it's a new learning curve. This was a learning curve, six years, and I've, and I've watched in the six years, the Pittsburgh Public Schools, schools grow. The incredible gains, I mean, we have a wonderful faculty, we have great people working towards, working with the schools and I have to tell you, I just, I have enjoyed the past six years. You know, and I want to continue seeing these advances. I mean, just, uh, listen to you guys and Michaela, it's just, it's incredible.
Well, there aren't a lot of ways for us to thank you and, uh, this is just a little gift, uh, you know, that we give our, um, school committee members and we really look at it this way, as we haven't lost a school committee member, we've gained a city counselor. Because I know for a fact that when you're there and school issues come up, you bring a whole knowledge of the school department that not everyone would have and I think that's a real positive thing, so thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, before you leave, I just want to say it was a real pleasure to work with both of you and, uh, we, we definitely miss you here and it's, we'll have to go to these very civil city council meetings to see you in action. Marissa, I saw when, one of, one of the very first ones, I think you were on, um, I think you passed out little candies and I thought, yeah, that's kind of bringing the school committee, so keep it up and-
I think Chad wants to get a photo.
Oh, excellent.
Did you guys open these yet?
Yeah.
Have you opened these?
Oh, oh, no, we haven't. Should we? Of course, now you're gonna, I can't. I can't nail. Thank you. Beautiful. This is very nice. Yeah, very nice.
Thank you.
I got a bigger one when I, when I-
Alright, thank you very much. It's not for serious. Now, Marissa, as what five counselor I'd like to talk to you about.
I have to tell you, our water's pretty good. Actually, I go looking for the issues.
Hey, uh, so just a couple of updates. Um, you know, they, uh, there's an event called Leading the Nation, so you've heard me talk about the fact we're doing a lot, we have a website about the things going on. And the state has an initiative called Leading the Nation, where it's putting forward all the positive things that public education does, uh, every day. And there's an event on April 5th from 10 to 12 at the State House. And each district is allowed to bring five representatives. to bring five representatives. So, I wanted to give all of you the opportunity, if you are interested in attending, send Patty an email, and we'll put together a team of five people from Pittsburgh who will be attending this event. So, it's April 5th, Thursday, April 5th, at the State House from ten to twelve.
Is that for?
What's that?
Adult only?
I couldn't.
Is that for adults only?
Um, I suppose we could have a student representative, so let me, if you're interested, send me an email, and if I don't get, you know, everybody that I need, you know, that would be really good. Be great to have a student rep with us, too. Yep?
I just wanted to touch base on Leading the Nation. I know that Pittsburgh High School did submit a video.
Yeah.
On just the, you know.
They haven't, I don't think they have finalized those yet. I think Chad, they haven't yet?
They have not. No, we should get notification within the next two weeks. But they did receive it.
So, every district is encouraged to do a short video, and Pittsburgh High School has submitted one. We also submitted photos of activities in Pittsburgh, because there's going to be a big website, and it's a competition to see who gets on the website. So, we're right there competing to get our photos or our video on the website. So, as soon as we know, we'll let you know. All right? Drama, I got to say, if there's ever a sense that you need thing, I'll re-echo what Mr. Stevens said. Have to ask. It's impossible for us to know what the needs are. So, if you're involved in an activity, or a sport, or anything, and you feel that there are resources that you need to make that better or to compete, then first place you go is to the building principal. If he can't help you, he comes to me. If I can't help you, I go to Bob, who oversees the money. But we want our students here in Pittsburgh to be well resourced. So, if that's the case, please let us know. Related to that, I don't know if you noticed, in the auditorium, we're just finishing about a hundred thousand, what's that?
About a hundred and ten thousand.
Hundred and ten thousand dollar state-of-the-art audiovisual rehabilitation of the auditorium at the high school. So, and it's almost done. I think we're getting ready now to do the training of the staff. So, that auditorium, which was already a beautiful venue, will now have the sound system, the screen, the projection, all the kinds of things that, you know, we need to be a really competitive school. So, when you need something, ask. And we're pretty good at trying to provide what people need. You already talked about the dropout prevention, so that's, that's great. Those statistics are incredible. Every single year for the past six years, the statistics have gotten better and better, and that's the work that all of you do. Regarding the school safety update, there is a, I sent an email home to all parents and to all staff today in English and Spanish. People should have gotten that. And it basically was, you know, letting everybody know what we've been doing, what we've been working on. I'm only going to read the bulleted part of it for the community, which are the things that we've been doing. The first one is during February vacation, the mayor, police chiefs, and I met to discuss school safety and collaboration of all the departments in the city. And we kind of looked at where we were and what we needed to do. We and the police, fire department have begun walkthroughs. So, we've, we've been doing, they're in progress, walkthroughs of every building with the fire and police looking at everything. You know, doors, windows, exits, anything that could be related to safety, so that we can put lists together of, for example, things that need to be done capital project-wise. Like, one of our goals is to get a complete swipe key system in all of our schools, so that your student ID would be your swipe card and the like. So, that's the kind of thing that we're looking at. We've also looked at the fact that even when you do all of that, it can be defeated by a pencil in the door to keep the door open. And that's, you know, so there's the facility side, there's the protocol side, and then there's the human side. So, you could have a building totally locked up tight, and someone decides to put a book in the door to go out to their car or to go somewhere else, and now you have basically, with a book, you've undermined which could be a state-of-the-art security system. So, we're looking at all of that, and then we will be making recommendations for whatever facility improvements we need to make. We're developing strategies for better communication between all of the departments. We purchased a hundred and twenty-five new walkie-talkies, because we, the walkie-talkie system that we had, there were gaps. There were places where, in particular schools, when you went to those corners or those hallways, you no longer were in communication. So, we have a hundred and twenty-five new walkie-talkies, and they've been tested in all of our buildings everywhere, and communication is top-notch. We have an ongoing planning committee that's meeting on a regular basis to look at all of these issues. I invited the police chief and the fire chief to my last administrative meeting. They shared, you know, their ideas, and we have agreed as a group to continue to work on the communication. One of the concerns that was brought up at the original meeting over the break was the need for additional resource officers. We have two now, one at the high school and one basically assigned to Long Joe Middle School, because we only had one other one. After that conversation, I made the recommendation that I would put an additional resource officer in my budget, and I know the police chief has had conversations with the city for funding another one, and he is writing grants. I, he told me the other day to try to fund one. So, our goal would be, we would double the amount of resource officers for this coming September, and then we would look at the assignments. And the other part that happened, what we found was when we looked at the security in the buildings, things were more up-to-date and focused in the buildings where there already was a resource officer, because they bring a set of eyes to the building and advice and recommendations that we might not be able to do. As I said at the meeting, we're educators. We're not in the business of safety and security, although we're quickly being pulled into it. So, those are kind of the main things in all schools. So, the other part is, you all remember, because you've been in school a long time, the four fire drills every year? Well, there are also emergency preparedness drills, you know, either evacuation drills, or if you use the ALICE program, which is a particular program for emergency preparedness, those drills also happen. And we found that those have been more sporadic than systematized. So, what we're going to start in September in Pittsburgh is that there will be two of those every year in every school, you know, one in the spring and one in the fall, and there will be a police presence during the drill, so that they can observe and see what's going on, and you can get immediate feedback on what's happening. And I know that through the mayor, you're putting forward, you're working, you want to talk about that on the bill?
The, I've had a discussion with my former colleague, Representative Hank Norton, who's the Public Safety Chair in the House, and the importance of, of he reaching out, he will come to Pittsburgh, he's offered that as part of the committee, have a meeting here in Pittsburgh. But the importance of, of resources from the state level to make some of the upgrades that the superintendent was speaking about, hardening the buildings, if you will, making it more, you know, more difficult for someone just walking in off the street. So, you know, the challenge we have is we have, we have old-school buildings. So, we need to upgrade those, but that takes money. And I think this is where the governor, along with the legislature, has to get together and talk about expending some resources to help all school districts in the Commonwealth, you know, make, make those needed, needed changes. So, we're even thinking about bringing in, you know, other communities, obviously, that have similar situations. We're all in the same situation. What I was going to ask Lisa and Matthew, what, you know, it's our job. It's our job as the administration on the part of the city, but also the school department, the teachers, to make sure that you're in a safe learning environment. With the advent of the Parkland disaster, are students more sensitive to, or is that asking too much? And I don't want to minimize, you know, young people and what they contribute, but, you know, if a student sees a door open, are they going to say something?
Oh, that actually.
I don't know. You know what I mean? Yeah, you know. Yeah. Because that's, you know, there's a lot, a lot of eyes there. You know what I mean?
Definitely.
You guys can have an impact, you know?
One day.
Yeah.
I recently got my license, so I came in late on accident one day, because of like the traffic and everything. And the bottom doors were locked, because they were always locked, but I went upstairs through the, like, the balcony way, and the door was, like, open.
Don't tell anybody how to do this.
I don't know how it was open. It was just open. To be honest, I got lucky, because I didn't have to go around the whole building, but I went straight to Mr. D, and I told him about the situation. I was like, "Look, I just came in late," and I went through the door, and he told me to go close it, because I didn't know what to do. So, I just ran straight to Mr. D's office, and I told him, and I went, I closed it.
Sure.
So, I, you know, I made sure that there was anyone, no one around, you know, because I was like, "Well, with everything going on, I..."
Yeah. But there are systems that will allow, you know, will set off a alarm when his door, when a door is open.
Yeah.
But again, that, that takes money, you know, to have those kinds of systems put in place. So, we're, you know, we're exploring that, and we're going to get the state involved.
Especially, I feel like especially for the high school, you know, since it's like the most populated school, and like, everyone knows, everyone knows where it is, every, like, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, like, I feel, I feel like that would be very good. I like Mr. Ravanel's idea about the student cards, where you just scan it in and you go in. It'll be easier for the students to get in without having to, like, walk around the whole building.
Yeah.
You know, to get in through the button thing.
And, and it's been proven that the resource officer really is the key here.
Yeah.
They can really have a profound impact on, on school safety.
Yeah, and Mr. Kimber, too. He does an exceptional job of.
Yes, that's right.
Locking all the doors as soon as, as soon as it strikes seven-thirty.
Right. Good. Okay. Question for the mayor? Yeah, oh, yes. The two new resource officers, will those be two new police officers in the city? Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, good. You know, we're not going to take. No, 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 no. Resource away. We're going to, two more. That's super. It'll be veteran officers who end up in the position, but they'll backfill with a new person. Super. That's good. Right. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Chief Fin, they'll be happy. Yeah.
Would it be easy to get, to get one of these cards if somebody were intended? That's just a thought to consider.
Oh, yeah.
But also.
What's that? I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
Would it be easy for somebody else to get a student card?
Well, they would all be programmed, so they're all programmed in. So, the only cards that can be used are those, are those cards, and also certain, you can change the times when those cards can be used. They can be used on a weekend, and it also logs in. So, the downside is that if you're late for school and you use your card, automatically it goes in what time you came in. So.
Does it match the face?
Yes.
Something? Facial identification as well as some, anyway. But the other point that I had, that just popped in my mind as we was talking. I sat through an ALICE program today. It was very interesting. But a lot of focus on the inside. How about the parameters? You know, the outside. Kids have to go out to the buses. Kids have to.
Yeah, all of that. It's all part of the program.
It's all part, in and out, yeah.
And, you know, one of the things I've said, and, and I, we, you do whatever you can to harden the school. That's true. But all of the talk of hardening the school is just one approach, because I then ask people, "So, are you going to eliminate recess? Are you going to eliminate outdoor sports? Are you going to have armored buses?" The bottom line is, if the only response to all of this is harden everything, you'd have to basically stop all outdoor activities, because if somebody is out to hurt someone, they're going to hurt someone. So, I think when we're looking at this issue, we have to look at all things. We'd be irresponsible to not harden our schools, to not take every possible physical thing we can do to make our schools safe. But our kids are not just in our schools all day. They're in a lot of other places, too. So, there's a bigger response to society, to make the whole society safe, not just the school. So, and I think that's why these conversations are really good. I think the students are adding a lot to the conversations. And, you know, as I said, you can put in all the security you want. You can spend millions of dollars on security. If somebody leaves the back door open, it's useless. So, there's a lot of conscious raising that needs to happen, too.
And then, one of my teachers, an exceptional teacher, Ms. O'Neill, she always has this conversation with the students. She always encourages us to never open the door to anyone, you know, regardless if it's like a friendly face, or you're in class with them, you know, if, like, you don't know them that well, you don't know what they're capable of, don't open the door, you know. Go contact an adult and get them to open the door. And like, also with, like, you know, as soon as it's two oh five, all the doors in the building are typically unlocked for, like, extracurricular activities, too. And there's a lot of people that stay after school, so that could be something, that could be accounted for, too. I mean, personally, I feel very safe within the school. Feel like there's a lot of staff on board, like, boarding to the buses. There's always, you know, teachers on the crosswalks, you know, watching for students and cars and things like that. And, you know, I play sports almost all seasons, and I feel very safe outside, especially with the location of the school, how it's so far away and out there. I don't feel like, you know, just anyone can come in and cause danger, so.
Any other questions about the safety and security component? So, you all have banned, you've seen enough about this, but, you know, this was an initiative that I came up with over the break. As I was trying to think about how to respond to this whole issue, it was clear to me that so many things would only be temporary, and I wanted something that could be addressed, but that didn't really have a particular political point of view. And there's nothing political about being kind. It's just a good thing to do. So, these have been distributed today to every student and every staff member in Pittsburgh, and I was having breakfast at the Family Cafe this morning, and two waitresses asked me if they could have, why couldn't they have a Red Raider kindness bracelet? So, I'm going to bring a bunch of those over there. The chief of police contacted me and said he wanted a bag of them for his officers, to offer them to his officers. So, if there's something we can all do together and start with, and that is, you know, being kind. And there are already, there were a lot of initiatives. Actually, the students and staff were my inspiration. You remember when Reingold came here and talked about their kindness initiative? Memorial Middle School has a "No One Eats Alone" initiative to be kind, so there are lots of things. So, this is our reminder. I'll wear it when you're in line, and the line's taking a long time, or somebody cuts you off in the highway, look at your bracelet. And, you know, just remember that that's what we're trying to do. Any questions on that? Okay. School calendar. You have before you our school calendar for a first reading. It's basically similar to last year's calendar. We should all have copies. Do you have a copy?
Yeah.
Mine is. So, it's basically, it's off by one day from last year's difference. We made a couple of changes in terms of where, you know, where the days are. We added the paraprofessionals. We always do a day of PD with them. There, it wasn't in the calendar. We added that to the calendar this year. But basically, it's similar to other years. You can see your, your, your pink days are early release days, and we have an early release before Thanksgiving and also before Christmas. You know, if you have any questions on the school calendar. We do it, this may seem early, but we do it because people start making plans way ahead of time. No? Okay. Memorial name change. So, that one might have, you might have thought, "Why are we changing the name of Memorial?" So, believe it or not, we're ready to go to construction for the three electronic signs that I've been wanting to get for a long time. We have one now at the high school. We have one at Goodrich, and now we're going out to construction for Memorial, Reingold, and South Street. We'll have the same kind of electronic sign that's at the high school. So, when I was looking, they sent me the draft of them, and I saw Memorial Intermediate School. And I thought, "Wow, we never called this Memorial Intermediate School." So, I went to the website, the DESI website, our website, and it says Memorial Intermediate School everywhere. So, I thought, "If this is ever a time, if there's ever a time, this is the time to officially change it to Memorial Middle School." I can't do that alone. The only people who The only people who can change the name of a school is the school committee.
It's always has been though, hasn't it? Always been MMS.
It's always been called that, but on every document I've seen, on every website, everything, it's Memorial Intermediate School.
If I could, this, this comes from the days when Pittsburgh High was first built, the new high school. It's not so new anymore. And Memorial was grade five and six only and Academy was grade seven and eight only.
Okay.
It was Academy Middle School, Memorial Intermediate.
It started, I started this middle school, 1981, and it was Memorial Junior High School. The ninth graders moved to the high school and we changed the school to Memorial Middle School. Now, whether we just did that...
It changed again when it was just a fifth and sixth grade.
It was, it was six, seven, and eight, and then the fifth graders got moved, so it was a five through eight.
No, it was a five through six. Five and six only. But, well, that's right. Originally five to eight, but then five and six only, seven and eight only at Academy. For four years, was it?
It was just changing when I came.
Yeah.
You know, that, yeah, that was after, after.
Right.
So, whatever the history is...
It needs to go back.
I, I can't, I didn't want to put a sign out there that says one thing and then officially it said another thing. So, it's on your agenda for an official vote to change this name to Memorial Middle School, which is what everybody calls it. And then, the last piece on the agenda is the Youth Ventures Champions Update and Paula is going to do that.
Thank you. So, there, there's a packet in your folder and it starts with United Way Youth Venture, Arthur Long Joe. There's also an additional flyer in color at your seat. Snow or no snow, this Thursday is the third annual showcase. So, this is just a quick summary. The last school, at the last school committee meeting, there was an update on some of the partnerships we have with a number of local community agencies and universities and all kinds of folks. Well, our partnership with the United Way of North Central Mass has expanded significantly. They were with us when we first started Footsteps to Brilliance a couple of years ago. It's expanded now to the Youth Venture Program at a number of our schools. And it's also expanded to something called a Changemaker Initiative and you'll get more information about that as well. So, at this time, we have Youth Ventures and they're entrepreneurial groups at schools. So, they run like a club with an advisor called a champion and groups of students who identify a cause and then work to develop a business model to support that cause. There's, the documents summarize, for example, Nancy Bakianowski is the Youth Venture Champion at Long Joe. She runs her program during an ELT enrichment class. She has rosters of students and the kinds of activities they're looking at are, and these are based on student passions. The adults do not choose the topic, the students do. Human trafficking prevention, animal rescuers to work with local shelters, cancer savers, raising money to donate to the cancer ward, and big donations for tiny lives to raise, again, money for supplies for animal shelters. So, each school has, there's Long Joe, McKay, Pittsburgh High, Goodrich, and it's, it's pretty exciting that every school has a group. They're working at developing student choice and voice and civic action. This is through an entrepreneurial model where they raise money and then donate to make the community or their cause better. So, it was at the time of all the partnerships, because of the larger footprint with the United Way, we thought we'd highlight some of their activities. You've heard Footsteps to Brilliance. Wednesday works, we have a big public-private partnership training for Footsteps to Brilliance on Wednesday. If it snows, we'll rearrange the date, but we have preschool providers from the community. So, that's, that's a big change. There's a whole, is it called the Early Literacy Initiative with the United Way? Ten school districts in North Central Mass are now working with Footsteps to Brilliance. Youth Venture is a big footprint in that, excuse me, the Ashoka Changemaker Project will be a big footprint. So, the way, my analogy is, we used to go to the prom with the United Way in the high school gymnasium. What's happening with our relationship with the United Way is more like dancing with the stars. Huge national, statewide and national civic action with our students. It's, it's a big, it's changed significantly. So, just an update. And everyone's welcome Thursday night, Great Wolf, from 5:00 to 7:00. Everyone is welcome to join us at the showcase. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Questions? Okay. And then finally, just a big picture budget update from Bob.
Hi. I included a packet in your weekly, a few pieces of paper, more than a few, in your weekly packet to really just formally kick off the FY19 budget season. The city auditor and I spoke and as we do every year, we really begin the budget process once we get our direct spending number from the city auditor. This year, that number is increased by 2.3 million and will be 56.5 million for FY19. So, that's really driven by our increases in enrollment over the last year. And as I detail in the memo, what's really important to look at is what subgroups increased over the last year. We had about 300 more students who are considered economically disadvantaged that amounted to about $507,000. And just in terms of percentage, that's a 10% increase from FY17. And really, what accounted for almost half or actually a little bit more than half of our direct spending increase is $1.6 million increase for PLL students. We had 144 student increase in that category and in terms of number of students, sets up 6% over FY17. So, the good news here, in addition to, I guess, just from a fiscal perspective, is that we're actually obtaining good data from our SIMS system and that translates into good results. You know, just as a reminder for this year and next year, there are some structural changes. This year, grants absorbed healthcare costs. And then also, this year, FY18 will be the last year that will, that we are carrying over any funds through Circuit Breaker. We've been able to do that every year that I've been here, which is now nine years. But that, that ends this year. We will not be able to carry over anymore because we'll be spending it all this year. So, we'll have to absorb those district tuitions and that's about just under $650,000. All of our, as, as, as you know, the, all our labor unit contracts expire the end of this June. So, we have begun negotiations with the teachers and looking what adjustments can be made there. Then just other, I had one sheet that just shows a lot of, a few tables and some graphs. One thing just to, to point out is our assessment to the local regional vocational technical school actually decreased in dollar terms by just about 6%. And that's driven by a little over 6.5% decrease in enrollment from FY16 to FY19. So, that's kind of the high-level view at this stage. Over the next month or so, we'll be starting to update, you know, anticipated salary rollovers, looking at various scenarios as we enter negotiations, look at, look at our special education population. We're constantly reviewing tuitions required and, you know, any other operational expenses that may need adjustment as well.
But, Monty Tech, we only pay for the students who go there, not a set amount like...
Correct.
We don't pay for 300 and 290 go.
Right, right. Because if, when you, when you look at this, Pete, in FY16, we had 412 students and just under 1.7 million. And next year, their, their projection is 385 students for under 1.6 million.
Okay.
Just under 1.6 million. So, yeah. Yeah.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Unless you have any other questions.
Bob, any? What about the students from Puerto Rico next year and money hasn't been?
So, they're about 70, I think.
We have about 60.
60.
And $6,000 per, but it's prorated, so if they're only here, that's for a whole year. But we originally were only getting $5,000 for all 60 new students. So, now, we'd get, a full amount would be 6,000 and then the prorating will be less. And the good news on that is that it can be carried over and used all the way to, in FY19. Because it's coming kind of late and it would be hard to really put it to the best use between now and June. So, we'll be able to plan more to respond to those students.
Governor, what?
15 million.
15 million.
Budget for this coming year?
Yep. Yep. For this current and allowable to carry over into next year.
Over two years. Okay. Yep.
Okay. All right. And donations, we're receiving a donation from Alliance Energy, 15 Northeast Industrial Road in Branford, Connecticut, and that's for $1,000 and two $500 checks. And that goes to the high school principal's account. And then, we also have a donation from Ms. Fleming and it's, the funding source is Donald Sandrelli and it is an electric piano and speakers and chords for a total of about $500, which will add to our music program. Thank you. And then, one of the things we're doing is, well, we've been transitioning from cardboard boxes to plastic bins everywhere. And with Crocker now, soon if not already, teachers will be able to get back into some of the sections of Crocker and begin to reclaim some of their materials. So, in order to do that efficiently, it's good to do with a plastic bin because you can put it in there, you can see what's in there, bring it to either Passio's or St. Anthony's, and then it's ready to go when they go back into Crocker. And the mayor reached out to F&amp;M Tool and Plastics and they've made a donation of 100 plastic bins. So, those have already been distributed to both the St. Anthony's School and the Passio's School. So, thank you and thank you to F&amp;M Tool and Plastics.
Let me, let me just say that this is a childhood friend of mine, Mark Esparro, is the owner of the company. And we don't say this very loudly, I'm from Lemonster, was born and raised, but, so I have a lot of people that I still know there. And they, they were kind enough to tell me about Mark's business and they called them and they were just, we couldn't be more thankful to them how, how helpful they, how many you need, where do we, where do we bring them? And they, they delivered. So, thanks to Mark Esparro for, for the help he provided. Thanks.
Hey, that's it? Just the action items now?
We're from St. Bernits. We still claim you from Pittsburgh. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I jumped the bus. That's right. Yeah. Okay. So, so policy items, action items? Do we want to bundle?
Okay.
Bundle them. Action items 18-970 up through and including 18-976. Do we hear a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Motion made. Do we hear a second? Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. It is unanimous. And now, we're, I need a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of negotiations and will return only to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move into executive session. All in favor?
Aye. It has to be a roll call.
Oh, roll. Oh, it does. That's right. Mrs. Reynolds?
Aye, yes.
LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Me? Yes.